Okay, we're gonna open the meeting. Start off the transportation with Mr. Toledo.
Well, as I know from yesterday, we had a great meeting with EMTA and their team, and Lynn Shanson, his team, and Sarah, tonight, actually, to answer any questions you may have. But, you know, we've kind of worked through an arrangement where EMTA is gonna agree to continue service for us for one more year, which is wonderful news, because it's gonna give us some more time to prepare for taking over some additional bus service from them. So we, right now, we have been talking to our, a couple consultants, Randy?
Yeah, we've, I've, since this started, I followed up with a number of consultants around the country, both transportation consultants and transportation software providers, along with bus manufacturers and retailers of school buses, to try to figure out a timeline as we, if we have to rush and put this all together by the first day of school. The resounding message I got from everyone, whether it was a bus manufacturer or a software provider, was, "Do not rush through this. Do not do this by the first day of school in August." And, you know, with the MTA's help and the cooperation between us and them, we're gonna put that off another year. So now we'll have a transition year to get to that point of some sort of yellow bus service for the 1920 school year. One of the things that we still have to look at, though, as we integrate and move forward to that over the course of the next school year, is some additional buses to add to our fleet, additional drivers, and some sort of transportation routing software to get us to that point, so everything runs smoothly for the 1920 school year.
So one of the things that we did talk about with the MTA, there's several runs that they're having difficulty accommodating and are very costly for them. So there, for this upcoming school year, there is going to be a price increase for us on this. So we're working with them right now to identify some of those more costly runs, and looking at the possibility of maybe taking a few of them back this year, just because it would be more cost-effective for both of us and maybe help with a smoother transition. So, at this point, we'll have more information on that in the next couple days. And as soon as we determine if we do need to bring some additional runs online, we'll notify you, because that will necessitate a additional meeting next week, so we can award a couple buses.
And we do have that bid out for those buses currently. The way we consulted with Attorney Walker on the language, so basically what we're doing is we're trying to see what buses are available, what buses are on the lots from these bus retailers right now. When we looked to get a order of bus, we were looking anywhere from end of September delivery date to mid-November delivery date. So there's buses on the lots, and hopefully we can get one of those at a reduced cost, because it's on the lot. But it's the brand new buses, and meet the needs, so we're ready to go first day school.
Randy, typically, what would mine cost, at average?
Eighty-five thousand.
That's not ridiculous. I thought we'd talk at a hundred and fifty thousand.
No, and that's the larger seventy-two passenger buses. So depending upon which options you go with, the propane ones are maybe five thousand more, but nothing more than that.
And how many seats are on that eighty-five thousand?
Seventy-two passengers.
That means three. That's, when they say seventy-two, whenever they're doing passenger, they're saying, "Three at a seat." So that's, for elementary students, it would be seventy-two.
For the bigger kids.
But for the high school, you can cut that number down by at least a quarter.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, Johnus?
Um, you want to say anything?
So, do you have any questions?
So which route, like, now that you mentioned the amount of seats on the buses, so which students would be receiving the new buses? Like, would it be the high school students, or?
That's what we have to work, yeah, that's what we're gonna work through with that, as far as which ones we're gonna inherit. We're still keeping the same routes that we did last year, and if you recall from a number of months ago, we're gonna be absorbing the couple routes for the first student also.
And talking with these guys outside, for sure, I mean, it's a crazy word, but they also said that even if, even if the bus service stopped, like what we're doing right now, they'd still give us support any way they possibly can. So it's not like they're just walking away from us.
They've been very cooperative through, you know, I think they've worked out a good plan, you know, moving forward, and, you know, this will give us some time to really start to look at what routes we can bring in-house, and maybe, you know, there's some opportunity for some routes to stay with the MTA. And, you know, as Lynn has told us, we're gonna continue to have a relationship with them, it's just not gonna be at the scale it is right now.
Yeah. I mean, we plan to have a long-term relationship with the school district. We just need to shift the focus a little more from providing the bulk of the school transportation, providing some of the classes. As a basis for comparison, our, our baby student buses are eight-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars each. So, that's quite a difference between school buses, you know, school buses and one of the courses that we've run. It's difficult for us to keep up with the demand of buying buses at that cost.
Just, I'd just like to thank the MTA for being cooperative and helpful, understanding where our situation is, and hoping that we can get through this in the future. It gives us a year to look at things and do things in a graduate way, and do it the right way, rather than trying to rush into something and then looking back and saying, "We should've put a, you know," so, thank you.
I'll admit, I apologize to the board, the folks here. I'm very new to this trade of authority in the area. I've been in trade for about sixteen years. This thing kind of felt like it was so for the newspaper. I'm sure that what was reported was always after it. However, we have never intended to leave the school district enlarged and discontinue service, and, you know, not only in the short term, but in the long term, but provide good quality service to the students of the school.
Okay, thank you. We'll move on to family vacations. Mr. Toledo?
So, based on some of the feedback we received last week, it was last week. We did make some adjustments to the student handbook and be...
Sure. I heard Mr. Toledo, he sent out that update, that last year there were about three-hundred-and-fifty students who had been out on vacation, which was a total of one-thousand-seven-hundred-and-forty-four days. So, one of the things we did was we modified the language, so that it would say, "Upon approval from the superintendent," and that we were limited to five days. So that we did slowly modify that in relationship. Jenny, you wanna share in?
No, I mean, we put it back in, but we tightened it up a little bit. So it'll probably maybe fall somewhere in the middle this year, next year.
Mr. President? Yes?
I just wanna say I appreciate that. I just, when it first hit for me, I had some real reservations about it, but I do understand the theory behind it, and that some regulation to it is fine with me. It was just like a blanket statement that taking your kid on vacation was gonna be an illegal action, as I thought it wasn't the right sort of... Thank you very much.
Yes?
And that won't be unwieldy or too much for the superintendent, that process, he won't get too long on?
Yeah, I think we'll get some solid recommendations from the principal.
You're involved.
And I was just gonna ask about what type of form of procedure. Are we ever working on that, as far as when we will or not approve? I know that that might be tricky. I'm also hoping that because the process is going to a superintendent's office, that parents will think hard and more seriously about when they plan their vacations and taking their students out of school during the school year, and hopefully start to plan for times when we're off, or for long weekends. And I also will be hopeful that maybe at some point we can even reduce it a little bit, because what I notice is the average is five days, and that's what we are giving them. So, hopefully, we'll be able to maybe reduce that in two years.
Okay, thank you. Move on to zero tolerance policy?
Yes, in our mailing, we did provide you with some information on that, and I asked Attorney Colonel, who'll be here tonight, to kind of explain our process for what we do with those type of violations.
Yeah, it's funny. Zero tolerance, that whole concept came around ten, fifteen years ago, when weapons, when the weapons laws first started being implemented by the legislature, and it was zero tolerance. And then quickly, there was such pushback, then the weapons policies, even from the state legislature, said, "But the superintendent can recommend a different consequence on a case-by-case basis." And we, many school districts, used the term "zero tolerance" in our policies for a number of years. Actually, two or three years ago, I should've looked, but it was a couple of years ago, we took the term "zero tolerance" out of our baby student handbook, because we all recognized that it was a misnomer. We really don't ever use zero tolerance. In fact, it's relatively rare when the school board and the school district even expel students who have weapons violations for a full year. It's pretty rare that we do that, unless the weapon violation was coupled with a violent assault or something like that. So, our Level Three policies are zero tolerance only to the extent that what is required under the policy is that for the four big ones, for violent assaults, for drugs, for weapons, and for, can't remember the fourth one, off the top of my head, endangerment, no, terroristic threats, that the building administrators do not have the discretion not to refer the student for expulsion. But certainly, the superintendent and the assistant superintendent and I, we review every single one that comes forward before we bring it to the board. And there are many times when we use our discretion and say, "We don't think it's appropriate to move forward with expulsion." I know maybe this year, a couple more times than normal, the district administration has moved forward on expulsions for younger children, K to five, in that age area, not kindergarten, but certainly in elementary. And what our practice has been for a number of years is that the district doesn't expel students in K to five for a weapons violation. We never put blinders on. The only time that the district does move forward in those situations is when the student not only has the weapon, but used the weapon, or threatened violence with the weapon to another student. And, coupled with, we don't think it was just a one-time thing, but that with input from the building administrator, we think that there's something going on with that little, with that young student, and that the student would actually very much benefit from being in an alternative program where there's a more therapeutic component to it. So it's not a blind disciplinary response from the district. Honestly, it's more of a, we sort of wanna force the parents to allow us to put the child in a more therapeutic setting. So, with that background, I really didn't see anywhere in the policy that I thought it should be changed, but I'm certainly open to hear input. Like, if I missed a reference to zero tolerance somewhere, or something like that, let me know. But I didn't, based on what I understood from the discussion last week, didn't really see anything glaring that I felt needed to be changed in the policy. Tyler, I think you're the one who had some questions. Was there anything specific?
No, I really appreciate the context. I think that there were, you know, this being my first year on, this also being the year that we had some anomalies present.
Some little ones.
So, that was my bigger concern, is that, "Do we have this blanket statement, and if so, can we go back and address that?" But I think, given the context and the discussion that came out last week, I'm much more comfortable, and I think everybody else was, with kind of what we learned, and understanding that these were rare circumstances, and there was much more to happen, that we were aware of maybe, like, when it went down. I know we were not particularly caring, but I mean, the way it reads, just with the, you know, in the handbook. So I'm glad that we had this discussion.
And I can actually say, Tyler, that two or three of the young students that actually were expelled this year, I believe two or three of them, it's the second time that they brought a weapon to school and threatened somebody with a weapon. So it gets to a point where we have safety concerns, even though the child's young, that if they can, you know, we've already given them, we already brought them back to school with a behavior contract, and they did it again. And it wasn't just they brought a plastic gun to school. It's they have a knife and they're threatening people. So, that's, it's a safety concern that...
It's just, the statistics just don't translate well to stories, you know what I mean? So that's hard when you're getting numbers and trying to understand the context. So I appreciate the discussion.
There is one expulsion that's on tonight, that's a expulsion by stipulation, where the student had brought a knife in a backpack, the day after the student had returned from the more therapeutic environment, I believe, with this cell program, and it was because he wanted to go back.
Oh, he wanted to go back to cell?
Wanted to go back to cell, and that's really what it was.
Oh, and one thing really quick. I'm sorry. We didn't wanna, at the eleventh hour, send out another updated resolution to the board, but the student handbook is on the agenda tonight for your approval. And this week, I've been reviewing the PSBA 100 Series Board policies, and one of those policies pertains to harassment and harassment investigation procedures. And they're substantively quite similar to the existing procedures that are articulated in the district student handbook. However, it just had some different language in it, and we don't wanna have two competing procedures on the books. And I knew that the 100 Series policies were going to get approved by this board after we printed thirteen thousand of these. So I just didn't want you to approve a procedure that then we have a different procedure. So what I did was I updated the handbook to be consistent with, well, put it this way, I revised what PSBA did, and then I put that into our policy, so that both policies will be consistent. So, without having to send you another update this afternoon, I wanted you to know that the version that you're going to be approving tonight has that third revised harassment policy, and Angela can make that change with some understanding.
Okay.
So with your consent, we would like to put that up, and make that change to the agenda now, so that you can approve that.
Everybody okay with that? Okay.
Thank you.
Move on to website refresh. Mr. Dublin?
Thank you. Last, but very quickly, I had presented to you the quote from Blackboard, "To extend our contract with SchoolWires for our website, and also to do an update that was going to be a one-time cost." At the meeting, there was some discussion, I know Mr. Titus had some questions about bidding. I think that Mr. Vitale answered them, that we had bid that product out many years ago, and all we're looking to do is extend the contract and do that upgrade. We do have it on tonight for vote, but wanted to check with all of you to make sure that would be okay, or if you had any other questions before voting on it this evening.
Any questions?
Just, I guess I would, again, thank you for the context. Sometimes, again, as a new board member, it's hard to do everything, take everything in at once. But I appreciated the conversation and the update.
I agree too, because I was a little fuzzy on that as well. I thought we were entering into a new contract, that, and was just maybe questioning, like, are we doing that now, when maybe we needed to look at more programming, contextual, and things like that for the students?
And I appreciate Mr. Vitale too, because I also didn't have that context. Are we good then for this? Okay, thank you.
Food service program overview.
As we began this year, there were a lot of different obstacles that we were facing as a school district. But I wanted to kind of share, just have Jenny share, just a quick overview. I think this is really one of the bright spots of the district, based on the amount of kids that we service, that we feed every day. Some of these numbers, I think, are a little bit staggering. And there were a lot of obstacles going into this year with the new start and end times of the day, the fire at Erie High, the breakfast, the new breakfast in the, not breakfast in the classroom, but the before-school snack program. So Jenny's just gonna kind of touch on that, give you some numbers of just the amount of kids and the nutrition that they receive every day on a daily basis in the district.
Thank you very much for your time. Certainly appreciate. I'd like to quickly introduce our team here, Don Redshaw, he's our district manager, he's in from corporate office. Jean Agar, she's our registered dietitian, we do have a full-time dietitian on staff. Rich Stafford is our chef manager, and he is the one who's been responsible for Greek dinner committee. And Sean Lee is also one of our chef managers. The items that we are passing out is something for you to take with you. There's a year-end interview report, but also, I printed off a copy of RAP's report. We make it every year now that we're part of the breakfast in the classroom program in the nation. So, yeah, I thought it'd be nice to give you an overview of what we actually serve this year. And we kind of did it in order of how we, how the kids eat. So, before-school snack program was added this year in all of our elementaries. And it's interesting, we served over ninety-eight thousand before-school snacks, which is just fabulous. Our breakfast program is served, we have all of these schools, with the exception of Erie Intervention, serves breakfast in the classroom. So our elementaries and middle school, they actually have the food delivered to the classroom in small bags. But Erie High and Cleveland Academy, they have some beautiful kiosks, that the kids pick up the food in the hallways with the blood of cafeteria feeding, and take it home. And we served over one million one-hundred-and-thirty-eight thousand breakfasts this year. Impressive numbers. Lunches, we are about eighty percent participation, so we do have some room to grow, which we will continue to work on the quality of food and service, so we can get those numbers up for you. But we served over one million six-hundred thousand lunches this year. Another program that was new this year was our two o'clock preschool snack. So preschoolers, as I understand it, we eat every three hours. And so we added a backroom snack in all the elementaries for the preschool kids, and we served over twenty-eight thousand preschool snacks. There is the fresh fruit and vegetable grant program, that is something that certain schools apply for with our help every year, and we never know until junior July if they've been awarded. We had McKinley and Edison, they reapplied for this year, and they did get it. Deale and Jefferson were two new schools that did it this year. And interestingly enough, I was sure that the Princeton schools would say, "We're not, we don't want this next year, just because of how much food we actually serve," but they loved the program, and they've all applied again, so we're waiting to hear on that. And those students, the fresh fruit and vegetable grant program, the idea behind it is to introduce different fruits and vegetables to children other than the norm. So yes, we do serve celery and carrots, and apple slices, and things of that nature. But we also, on Mondays, Wednesdays, and Fridays, try and get the kids to have things like mango, kiwi, or starfruit, or raspberries, or blackberries, or hickory. So we have quite a variety in the school year. An after-school snack program is something that's been done for years, that has always been revolved around the Gears After-School Program. However, this year, we extended it to Collegiate Academy, Strong Vincent's as well. And really, any school that has some type of educational after-school program, maybe sports, or a club, even a chess club, can receive a free snack. So we served over thirty-three thousand snacks this year. And then our dinner program. So our dinner program, again, it revolves around the Gears Program, and that is served in all the elementaries, with the exception of Perry, and we serve over seventeen thousand dinners. So that's quite a few reimbursable meals. And all of the meals I've stated so far, all have grant, are funded through the National School Lunch Program, or the Child Adult Care Food Program. And then, of course, we cater throughout the district. And then we also are responsible for swinging by the food bank every Thursday, and picking up all the backpacks, and delivering it to the elementary schools for distribution. I thought I had mentioned what our funding streams are, and the acronyms are all around them. So the National School Lunch Program, known as the NSLP, that takes care of our breakfast funding, our lunch funding, our fresh fruit vegetable grant funding, as well as our after-school snack funding. And then the CACFP, which is the Child Adult Food Care Food Program, that takes care of our before-school snack funding, our preschool snack, and our dinner program. And both of those items are taking care of all the reconciliation with Randy and Andrea directly with the government. Breakfast in the classroom, I know I'm rushing, but there's such good information. Breakfast in the classroom actually has been made possible through two grants from partners from Breakfast in the Classroom. And this is one of my most exciting slides, I think. So Phase One began in August of 2014, and we really didn't think many people would be interested. People who were principals interested in it. And it took some time, but it caught on, and we're so excited to say that really, every school, other than our online kids, are taking advantage of Breakfast in the Classroom. So our first grant award was for two-hundred-and-forty-nine thousand, and our second grant award was for three-hundred-and-sixty-nine thousand. And those, that funds, that took care of equipment to start the program, for the food service program, like the cages and the bags, and things of that nature. But most recently, it also paid for some nice forest covers that are on the way for Eric's delivery. Prior to Breakfast in the Classroom, our participation per breakfast ranged between sixteen and forty-four percent through the district. And we're excited to say, depending on the school, it's between thirty-eight and eighty-seven percent. And this is the most exciting number. In thirteen fourteen, before we had the program, we served about four-hundred-and-ninety-one thousand breakfasts, and this year, Breakfast in the Classroom is one million one-hundred-and-seventeen thousand. So that is just, it's awesome. There are so many benefits to the kids having breakfast, they are ready to start the day. Some of the comments that we got from the principals, it's a calmer environment, oftentimes, in the before, the traditional setting in the cafeteria, it was a hard time, it's hard to get the kids to school on time for school, let alone early for breakfast. And when the kids did come in, there was a stigma attached to needing breakfast, but additionally, lots of chaos always started at breakfast, because it wasn't as organized. And children of different ages sat together, and so then that continued on to the classroom. But we're excited to say, it's a calmer environment, we acquired the hallways, it's definitely a family-like setting. We've had reports of reduction in trips to the school nurse, reduction in tardiness, absenteeism, horse miles. One of the most awesome things is the principals and the teachers used to bring food from home for the kids who were hungry, and had bellyaches, and there's no need for that anymore. And then, of course, student leadership has developed at many of the schools. Edison Elementary, some of the kids bring the breakfast bags back down. Over at Connell, the older kids go into the kindergarten classes and help them get ready for breakfast. So leadership has definitely developed. And then lunch. Lunch, I always talk about breakfast, so I would say lunch is a little something about lunch. But really, our kids, in the school day, should not be hungry, because of all the food outlets that they have. But what makes a meal in the National School Lunch Program world is definitely, it's protein, a grain, a milk, a fruit, and a vegetable. And the kids have to take three of the five components to get the free lunch, and then one of them always has to be a fruit or a vegetable. But the interesting thing is, is the kids can actually have two portions of fruit and two portions of vegetables. And in most of our schools, especially the elementary, you'll see they'll load their trays up. Real quickly, our lunch options, to give you an idea of what we have for kids. In the elementary school, there is always the entree of the day, it's a hot item. We have also a cheese stick and yogurt combo, peanut butter and jelly, apple crusticle. There is always a chef or a garden salad available as an entree, but also Broker Cleveland does have a salad bar. And then there's a cradle bowl of the week, which you'll see a picture of, and that's actually Metz's version of the lunch bowl that you'll see in the grocery store, and it is definitely a hot item for the elementary kids. In the middle schools and high schools, it's slightly different. They also have an entree of the day. Many of the schools have a theme bar of the week, so it might be a pasta bar, it might be an oriental bar, it might be a breakfast bar, and that changes weekly. They also have the entree salad option, and some schools have salad bars. There is fresh dough pizza at all available in high schools that we make fresh every day. Chicken patties, deli sandwiches, peanut butter and jelly. Collegiate Erie High have popcorn chicken. And then also, we have an up-for-grab sandwich and salad program at Collegiate Academy, but it is also going to be expanded to Erie High this year. So there are quite a few options for kids. And then what's next? Well, next year, we're gonna fine-tune everything that we started doing this year. We're gonna continue to work on our food quality and our service. We also will see that we say a lot about chef-driven restaurant-inspired dining, because really, the K-12 division across the nation really is changing. And so we need to think and take a look at what their needs are, what their desires are, and work on getting participation up, and that's one of our goals for next year. And I just shut this off. But one, something exciting that's also gonna happen next year is we're part of the name of Hana Kowski Erie High. We're gonna be having interns in the culinary center on a, you know, daily basis, based on the student's schedule, and we're going to get them involved in catering prep and cooking for the kids. We have this great program, we might as well marry the two. Additionally, there will be spots available at other local Metz accounts for kids who might want an intern. And then, one of the things that Pam had asked if we would be interested in working on is to showcase tours of our culinary center. So Pam's vision, I believe, is to bring the middle school kids into the culinary center, we'll have a nice lunch for them, we'll do a cooking demonstration, and we're gonna showcase what this, you know... what this, you know, this is all about. And then hopefully that'll promote Erie School District's culinary program at Erie High. That's our goal for next year. Feedback, just a little thing on feedback, we're always looking for feedback, whether it's from any of our guests and definitely you. So if you have any questions or comments, I'd always love to hear them. It's through our feedback that we actually make changes to make our program better. And so you do know, we, this year, made sure that every student had a voice in the food service program this year. Every elementary school, they were sent flyers to work, fill out what their teachers and what they liked, what they didn't like, what they'd like to see. And then in the phys ed classes, every student had a chance to fill out a survey there as well. And from those tallying results, we actually made changes for next year. So I did try and rush that for you. I appreciate your time. I want to thank you very much. And if you ever have any questions or any questions that, I'm happy to answer.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Yeah.
I heard you said that you were partnering with Erie High students in their culinary program. I don't know if you already do this or not, but I know I went to tour another school and they have the culinary program where they actually open up the kids who do catering. So they actually have a business with the students and they cater events in the city. So I don't know if that's something that was an idea or possibility for this.
Can we talk about that?
Yes. So I know you probably know the other school that does have a program and I know people who use those kids at the, it's at the Skills Center. Yeah, I can't think of where it was. But anyway, they have a program where the students work with the company and then they actually cater events and they get paid to do it. So, I mean, I think that's a great opportunity while you're partnering with Erie High is to maybe get into some type of talks about actually catering events once, you know, the kids.
The vision of our culinary teachers is to pretty much take over all catering.
Care of the school. But I would like to see something like that happen. So, you know, then it also encourages like career and entrepreneurship ideology with the students, you know, where they can feel like, you know, maybe they have their own caterer business when they graduate or things like that.
Awesome. It's surprising.
Yes.
I was actually very happy to see that Broker Cleveland did have a salad bar for the elementary students. I was wondering how that came about and whether there was a possibility for that to grow to the other elementary schools.
Actually, we could certainly do it in any elementary school. We've had them in other elementary schools in the past and a lot of times it comes down to the speed of service and the staff, not the men's staff, but the administration of the building, whether they desire a salad bar or an entree salad, just to get the kids through faster. But certainly we'd be willing to, you know, place them at other schools, it's not a problem. It's a fun way to get kids involved in picking and making choices of healthy options. So yeah, absolutely. All right. Well, thank you very much. I appreciate your time.
Board Policy 626, Mrs. Walker.
Let me mention this briefly, the committee of the whole, and Randy's here to talk about some of the specifics, but this is the federal board, the policy related to federal fiscal compliance that is a result of the federal guidelines on the uniform grant guidelines that we must comply with in order to continue to receive our federal funding.
This is something that's been coming for several years now. The federal government has, I think for two or three years now, kind of kicked the deadline down the road another year because they were not ready yet to implement, because they're still making changes. I think in the back of my mind, they're still holding off to approve this because we weren't sure if they were gonna come forward June 1st and say, hey, wait another year. So that's why we're asking for your approval tonight on this policy. Again, this is Policy 626, which is the federal procurement policy for the district. And what it does is it incorporates all of the uniform grants guidance policies, including procurement, allowable ability of costs, and some other items. And then it gives the superintendent the procedures, the permission or the procedures to make sure that these policies are implemented as we go forward.
So what you'll be seeing is this is the general authorizing policy. And then the superintendent has the ability to approve, similar to an administrative regulation, with the PSBA set up to be attachments to this policy that dictate as to how the district is going to administratively handle these matters. And so what we'd be looking at doing is approving Policy 626 tonight to create the vehicle through which we can put the policies in to meet the federal compliance guidelines.
Any questions on that?
This was sent out to the policy committee, I believe, after we discussed it last week. And so if there are any questions on this, specifics to the language, we'd be happy to answer at this point.
Thank you for that.
Thank you very much. There's one other item with Randy here on the electric contract.
Yes. So at the committee, covering this for Dave while Dave's out this week, but last week and when you met with the committee of the whole, there was a placeholder and resolution for the new contract for our electrical provider, electricity provider, I think it was through Constellation. The attachment that was included were the rates from that date, from June 8th, or right around there. Those rates have been updated. I think they actually came in at the same, but you'll notice the attachment has been updated to reflect the June 20th date.
That came in today and the pricing on the last version that's on the agenda currently expired journey. And here we have pricing that is going to expire today if we don't agree to it. And so similar to how we requested approval from you to put the handbook on at the last minute, we'd like to swap out the attachment on the agenda for the pricing sheet that's valid for today.
I just have questions about the company and is this the provider we've been using for a while? Why you chose this provider? I noticed they're from Texas. I wonder why you might not be using a Pennsylvania provider?
That's been a, we, they had, we used them last year. They bought or were absorbed by another company the year before. We do have a broker that shops that for us. And in order to save the district money, that's who we wound up going with.
I was just questioning that maybe, do we have to go into a three-year contract? I noticed it was for three years. I do know that there's a new energy company that was just started in, I believe, April called Erie Energy LLC. And so that is the only reason I was asking that is that because it's a three-year contract, I didn't know if they could do a better deal for us or not. So I just thought I'd bring that to your attention.
These are very big companies that provide the actual energy.
Oh, they provide the energy, not brokers?
Right.
Oh, okay. Oh, I'm misunderstanding. I thought they were brokers.
I don't know when a broker contract is up, but that's certainly something we could take a look at.
Okay.
It would, Premier Powers who we use and different ones, but not Premier.
Okay. Thank you. I misunderstood.
We're happy to go.
Thank you. So Angela has graciously prepared all this and she will make those swaps in the delivery queue.
Anything on new business or supplementals?
Just like to apologize for the number of supplementals that this, we had a lot of things in flux here at the end of the school year that we were trying to get done.
We started finding these three points every time.
Apologize every month.
I know. Any other matter before we go into executive session? If not, we're gonna go into executive session.